Sorry. What was that?
I was gonna remind you to start the stream, but it looks like it already started.
So, thank you, Michael. Um. Our next bit of business is a presentation from um. Uh, one man who you know, Bill Rohr, who was a part of our grant writing team, but um. Since uh, uh, Duke DeCasey is still. Um. On the mend. Uh, Bill has engaged James Tatum. You can see on your screen. You just waved to us all. And they uh, will talk to us about. Uh, the new stream of 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 money that's available. And you know what we've been in conversation with uh, with them. About uh, in terms of stimulus money. And uh, grant writing. Um. And Bill, you want to take it away or? You gotta unmute yourself, Bill.
Okay, there we go. Thank you very much, Tom.
Hold on, I want to say, and Shaheen, could you post uh? What I sent you? For their presentation? Hmm. Okay, there we go. Okay, take it away.
Okay, and you'll have to go uh, what I wanted to do here, yep, thank you. Uh, this first of all, introduce James Tatum. Uh, I teach a class every spring at Syracuse University at the Maxwell School. Uh, and graduates class. Uh, four years ago, James was part of it since graduating at the, at the top of his class there. He has been working for the city of Detroit with a very elite team. Uh, that's been getting the city out of its bankruptcy and so forth, so. Um, we've collaborated on on several projects together. So I just wanted to let you know who James is. Uh, this is, I gotta tell you, this is a, gonna be almost like a once in a generation opportunity. Over the next couple of years, uh, in terms of grants, it's one of the reasons I. I brought James in, we really needed some more uh, technical ability in our, in our company, so that's why he's, he's also on board here. Um, so we'll be talking about that, and and so what I wanted to do tonight was introduce James. Uh, you know. The, as I mentioned, the. Opportunities created by the stimulus packages, and there's been three of them, the CARES Act. The one that was uh, signed into law at the end of December. Uh, and then the, the latest one that happened, uh, that was signed into law in in March. Bill, uh, trillions of dollars, obviously. Some of which is still outlined in in broad terms. Other parts of which are being now translated into. Uh, specific programmatic initiatives, and that's what we've been following here. Um, the other thing I I just, just two thoughts that I want to put in your head here. As we get into the grants and the opportunities. That we do all the planning that we can because we're expecting a serious influx. Of infrastructure money. Uh, from the next bill, so we want to do that. And finally, uh, one thing Tom and I have talked about, and James and I have. Have worked on with another colleague who's on the faculty at the Maxwell School. Is is multi-year budgeting and long-term fiscal planning. Really, the preponderance of the the discussion and and just interrupt me. At any time is going to be. Uh, follow the uh, outline that uh, Michael in the. Mayor's office sent to me about specific. Opportunities here, so if you want to go down towards this uh, housing uh, CDBG micro enterprise.
Hey, I'm gonna scroll, please.
Thank you.
There you go, there you go.
Okay, so. This is, this is another big thing, uh, Rebecca and I have talked about this, uh. There's going to be. A couple rounds of CDBG, the other way to think, the other thing that's happening here is with the. Uh, our emergence from the pandemic, coupled with the fact that the. Uh, the latest round of stimulus money really made the state whole. Is that there is a. Uh, the the dam is really gonna let go on a lot of state monies, you know, for instance, last year, the CFA was canceled. Uh, so there's going to be, that means for CDBG, okay? Uh, there's going to be two rounds. The, the first round is, it's out there already, it's funded through the CARES Act, there was another forty-nine million dollars. Given to non-entitlemented communities, that's places like Hudson that have to compete. For CDBG monies, so. Uh, that round is open through the end of August. Uh, the projects submitted during this, and I know Rebecca attended the uh. Uh, one of the workshops on this, have to have some rational nexus to uh. Uh, the pandemic and subsequent uh, community recovery. I also spoke with, at length with Charlie Fillion at HCR, runs this program. There's gonna be a second round of CDBG, this time it'll be through the consult, solidated funding application. And uh, you know, that is your standard, includes, you know, eligible activities. Uh, housing, infrastructure, public facilities and so forth. The final thing I wanted to mention is that funding for economic development such as micro enterprise stuff is open. Uh. All year round. So what we would like to do, I want to mention this, Calvin, Tom, John, Rebecca, everybody. Here is to start thinking about putting together specific projects for CDBG. Uh, as quickly as we possibly can. Any, any questions on that?
Uh, I, I just have a comment, um. One, I just wanna put this out there that um. So the deadline is in August, I believe, for CDBG funding. And I was as a teen at the meeting that um. One eligible sub-recipient of a CDBG, of CDBG funding would be a housing trust fund, so. That's gonna be my goal is to establish that, one of our priorities.
Yep, yep.
Or for funding.
Okay, okay. And that, that is correct, the city always has to be the applicant of record. But as, as Rebecca mentioned, the, you know, housing trust fund can be a rec, a recipient. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention with the CDBG funds, and there's some other stuff coming up. There's a separate planning grant that comes out of this, we're gonna recommend doing that and maybe. Really focusing on uh, affordable housing. Uh, as part of that plan, there was a plan done. About nine years ago, uh, very extensive document created in the last three years. Uh, but there, there needs to be uh, some additional work done for for uh, for housing in terms of planning.
Well, it sounds like, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but just.
Go ahead, Rebecca.
You know, we have, so we already have the affordable housing timeline.
Yep.
Being, being done, and so it sounds like maybe. Also, we have some zoning needs.
Right, and that can be addressed in the plan.
Yep.
That's, that would provide the money to do that. So.
Yeah.
Uh, if you'd move down to brownfield opportunity area. Uh, LWRP, thank you. There was, the city has had started on a, on the boa process a few years ago. A, a boa pre-nomination study was completed. Um, that's, I think probably available on the city's website, if not, we can certainly get it to you. Uh, I think Michael sent a copy to me. Uh. That is something. Worth pursuing as it allows for, uh, that was just an overview, the second part allows you to get in, do some physical testing. Also to uh. Uh, do some, some, some plans and stuff like that, it's pretty flexible money, infrastructure analysis. Again, Rebecca zoning, regulatory updates, housing studies, analysis, that's another source for that. That's fairly easy money to get. What I'd recommend is that uh, I would simply reestablish contact with the Department of State where. I know most of the folks that work there. And uh, talk about going into the next phase of that. Eventually, that leads to some monies for, you know, site cleanup and so forth. Uh, not as much as I would like. We did the, years ago, we did the Foster's refrigeration site under a. A different uh, state program. But this goes back to where, where we see the feds going. If we have the Boeing, uh, the brownfield opportunity, and we get some more stuff that done there, some more analysis and so forth. Have, have it set up so that we're ready to go. With projects, okay, when the federal money for brownfields is increased. Which it actually has been in the last four years, believe it or not. Uh, that, that would be something, and there certainly are a few sites within the city.
Well.
Yeah, Tom.
Does this allow us to identify, like, if we have existing. Real estate and and vacant real estate, empty lots. Is there a way to get that all assessed with the? You know, uh, site-specific um, analysis?
It would, Tom, it would, yes.
Cause I think you talked about that before, because we have a number of empty properties where we, we don't really know the conditions underneath.
Absolutely, it allows for, you know, essentially what's called phase two analysis. Uh, which is going in and doing some borings and stuff like that, so absolutely.
Thank you.
I think Sher, Shersha, do you have, did you wanna say something, or have your hand?
I guess to leave.
Oh, okay.
Shersha? Shersha does have a, a point about um, a grant that he wanted to ask about.
Oh, okay, Shersha, go ahead. Are you still there?
Uh, Bill, um, I mean, it might interrupt the flow, but I mean, I know.
No, no, not at all, not at all.
I mean, I'm aware of it, and I, he's been, you know, they're looking to get um, grant support for uh. Um, a traffic light removal at the um. Uh, or no, no, I shouldn't say removal, they wanna have the current, whether the traffic light is being supported near the um, the new.
Yeah, that, there's a. Can I, can I say it, John?
Yeah, oh yeah, come on, sorry, I didn't see you on the call still.
Yeah, yeah, actually, I wasn't praying, and yeah, um. That, there is a pool in front of the Hassan mosque. And it's, it's not right place for ADA compliance, so we're planning to move that. Pool from that uh, uh, mock site. So is there any grant, so we could, we could use that grant to move that pool?
You know what I'd like to do, could you send me some uh, just photos or just circle where it would be on uh, I know where the mosque is.
Bill, there's, there's an extensive discussion about this between uh, Rob Perry and others. And we'll send that all to you.
Okay, great, thank you, Tom. And I'll, we'll get to that, Duwan, we'll take a hard look at that.
Hi, uh, I have a question too, Mr. Rohr, how you doing, sir, this is Malachi Walker.
Malachi, please call me Bill.
We're gonna get to yours, Malachi, but go ahead now. No, it's all right, go ahead.
Go ahead, I could wait if this was already in the pool, it's okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Bill, you can speak to Malachi's concern, you, you know what he wants.
No, no, go, go ahead, Malachi, well, go ahead.
Hey, Tom, before uh, before you started, I, I have to leave.
Okay. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, no, yeah, Bill, I just, you know. Just wondering about uh, you know, where, where would this fall, the, you know, the industrial outdoor fitness equipment fall under?
Um. Malachi, we, we looked into that, and there's, there's two things here, there's. Uh, right now, the Healthy Trails Program through the New York State Department of Health. Where you can do stuff like that, you know, tie it into a trail or a walkway. Uh, it could just be a, a, a circuit and stuff like that. And then the other place where equipment can be funded. You know, like, you had shown me some stuff uh. Down in Charles Williams Park, if you wanted to put equipment down there, it's, it's a, you know, designated parkland. So that could be done under the Parks Improvement Program. And that could, that type of equipment could be installed in any of the parks under that program. Uh, that is run by the Office of Pa, State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation.
Yeah, specifically, uh, you know, the basketball court, which is. Actually sits kinda outside um, with a, maybe a. A fence and even a, you know, a bathroom if it's possible. And maybe even.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know, we, it was, geez, way back in two thousand and six, when we originally got that money. We would uh, you know, the money we got, I think it was, it was a lot then, it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It only goes so far, so we'd like to. Uh, you know, it's a, what you're calling, not, not ours, but it certainly makes sense to continue the investment in that park. And the state always likes to continue investing in projects where they've already spent some money.
Right. And I mean, I see, you know, just little things too, like I see, they did have a grill down there, I think, and maybe we could set up a, a few grills. Uh. And also maybe some tables and that sort of thing, but, you know, just to. You know, make it just more recreational setting.
Yeah. Yeah. Malachi, one of, one of the things I'm going to do is get to you the. Uh, there, there was an original plan that we developed. You know, with uh, renderings and a site plan and everything like that. I'll get that to you and, and uh. Maybe, you know, the. That'll prompt some additional ideas.
Okay, Bill, you wanna go through your, the rest of your?
Sure, sure, Tom, uh, LWRP, that's Local Waterfront Revitalization Program. We've already uh, I don't think the city has actually formally. Ever adopted an LWRP, has it, Tom?
We did.
Adopted it, but.
Guys did.
It has not been submitted, it was submitted and returned to us, and it's kind of sitting there.
Okay.
Yes, it yet.
Here's the deal with the LWRP, that ain't gonna hurt you a bit, we uh, we've gotten funding. Down in uh, along the waterfront for various projects, a lot of studies and stuff like that. Troy does not have an approved LWRP. And I used to grab frankly, several hundred thousand dollars a year. In projects, just because it felt they were close to the riverfront, so. It's always nice to get that done, but I want to point out that it's not really gonna be a hindrance here.
Okay, scrolling down, Shaheen, please.
Yep.
Oh, I just, if I could add something, Tom, Michael?
Sure.
I just wanted to, well, one of the things that we could fund is. Is an LDA, is like re-kickstarting the LWRP process to resubmit that. Uh, so that DOS, like had, basically had encouraged us to look at that BOA, boa funding. To basically, to use that money for both groundfields and to restart our LWRP.
That's a great idea, Michael. Can we, uh, Michael, what I'd like to do is have a follow-up conversation on that. Because there is a, a lot of, you can see it, programmatic overlap there. And that's a good way to fund it, okay. Great. Okay, parks here, um. I know that uh. You ran into some, some issues just on, on the, the, the cost of construction, which is. Gone through the roof since you probably put out your uh, request for proposals or your bids. On that, um, and there was uh. Couple of funding sources that come to mind here. You can use CDBG funds for accessibility upgrades, okay? Uh, then there's also the Park Improvement Program. Which gets mentioned quite a bit here, and once again, the, the LWRP. Now, we're, what's gonna, you, you're positioned really well here. Because you. Steve, go ahead. No. Somebody has, no, because you've received that, that DRA mon, DRI money. And you're getting some of this done, so again, it's the bandwagon. Uh, the other agencies are, are more likely to jump onto this and. And, you know, they, they claim the, you know, rehabilitation of. Accessibility improvements as Prominent Hill Park, they count that as part of their portfolio. So getting that kick-started with the DRA, DRI is a real big deal. So I just wanted to mention that. Uh, Seventh Street and, and Oakdale. There is, and I talked to uh, Rob about this, up at Oakdale, I know there's a. I, I believe this is where it is here, is that where we have a water chestnut. Uh, issue weeds. I hope I'm not confusing that with another site.
No, that's, I think that's our um. Uh, the reservoir.
Okay, okay, Doc, my, my apologies there. The uh, certainly the, there's a Parks Improvement Program. We have pitched this a couple times, I mean. Uh, before, where we had. Just strong, strong applications, I. And for, for the Seventh Street Park, and it, it didn't get funded, and it's just frustrating, we're, we're. Like to get it funded, we'd like to try it again, it's just been. I, I don't know what, where the reticence is coming in, we've had, you know, detailed plans, we've broken it out, so it's in. In phases, so it's fundable. Uh, any additional thoughts on that? Just let me know.
Well, there's plenty of. Well, as you know, of course, you pointed out, the Prominent Hill has some uh, upgrades already, you know, phased out. Oakdale Lake Project had many um. Uh, phases to it, and they could easily be, they're ready to go, they just need funding. Uh, the Seventh Street Park proposal is still a very early stage. We also have. Uh, available to us a, a design that was done for one of the pocket parks. Um, so we have a lot of things that we could send to you that could be uh, potentially.
That would, that would be good, particularly the plans for Oakdale, I, I haven't seen those yet, I apologize again for confusing uh, the reservoir with uh, Oakdale. Um, that would be helpful.
Now, both were developed, both were developed by public-private groups.
Okay, good, good. Tom, is there some type of organization within the city that's like, you know. The friends of pocket parks, the friends of Seventh Street Parks, the friends of. Those, the, the existence of those organizations is a really big deal.
Right.
Really big deal. And I, you know, way, I, I know I'm not as. Sagrant on, on some of the, these opportunities as, as the others, however. Remember that all this infrastructure money is gonna filter down in all sorts of different ways. Uh, there's just a lot of money coming, so it's gonna be. Uh. It's gonna be a whole different world in terms of our ability to, to fund some of these things that have been historically difficult to fund.
But Bill, like, when, but what kind of timeline do we need to set up? To basically organize which projects are going to be applied for and what needs to happen in order for them to be applied for?
I, I'd like to do this as, as soon as possible, and I'd like to. If there could be an informal group, I'm, I'm not sure what's required here under Open Meetings Law, Tom. Uh, where we can at least do a Zoom meeting once a week, I would love to do that. Have James involved, um.
We'll set that up.
Ton of projects this year, we wanna jump on these early.
Yep.
And as, I mean, I'd just like to, for a second, just talk about one interesting, uh, Tom, you're not supposed to sigh with exasperation.
I'm not exasperated, sorry, no, that was.
Okay, um. So.
Looks like a god to me.
Well, um. You know, one of the, well, I'm hoping that there might be some people who are here from the public to, tonight, who might be interested in. Um, being a part of this process going forward, the grant. Uh, the grant determination process, cause it's a pretty, I mean, one of the things that we've talked about, Bill, is that the city has a. Pretty serious dearth of capacity in terms of uh, defining. Projects and moving them along, I think that that's been a real issue for the city in. Getting this money, which, you know, there's two times a year, I believe. These funds are released in a normal, in a normal cycle, it's two years that these funds come down, and I, I mean, I don't think. I think you've told me that the city has never applied for any funding for housing project, housing-related projects, never. Never once, right?
No, no, so we have to.
Pretty shocking, really, and I think it speaks to, I mean, because, I mean, we could talk a little bit about what kinds of funds are available, actually through. From the state for, for example, rental rehabilitation, which, you know, the city, um, you know, ten or fifteen years ago, for example, could have really. Uh, made huge use of a program like that, but apparently there just wasn't the will. In the city, and there wasn't the capacity to, to put forward those kind of programs anyways. My point being, now going forward, we need to really um, get more activated. Around how to get this money, cause there's also small business support, right?
Yeah, what I, what I've done here is for tonight, I, I really followed Michael's outline, cause it was, it was very good, and it really talked to things that were. Under active consideration. So I kind of fairly tightly circumscribed the, 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 the universe of opportunities for discussion. This is certainly uh, not a, 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 a complete list. And what we really have to do. Is have i, an honest and productive discussion about, you know, just, just capacity. Capacity to apply, to put the projects together, to, to, to spend the money effectively, that's, that's the big thing. We can get the money. Okay, we're, we're creating our own capacity at TGW, that's why James is involved. Uh, but there's, there's a lot more, there's, there's, you know, community capacity there as well.
Mm-hmm, and organizations that are within the city can partner with the city to apply for these.
Absolutely, that's, that's part of the capacity, yes.
Right, and so that's what you're talking about with like the Friends of the Seventh Street Park, for example, but there's, there's any number of examples of other kinds of organizations that could. Um. Work to, to, and, and the money is substantial, so.
It is, it is, I mean, this, this is really an unusual opportunity here.
Yep.
Okay, you wanna um, move, scroll down a little bit, Shaheen? Shaheen?
There we go, FEMA. Reimbursement, we have, we've registered everything for. Uh, for FEMA, I just got some, somebody from FEMA just reached out to me. The reimbursement window is open a few months, what there are, and I need to talk to Rob. About this, as, as well as a few other folks, you don't have a ton of costs, but there are gonna be some, so you'll be able to get some money back. Um, but with. The, the guidance regarding FEMA. Uh, is, is continually evolving, I'm doing this on a couple other places. And so, uh, any costs that were related to vaccine. Distribution, advertising, anything like that, there's a lot of new categories that have opened up. I need to just uh. Uh, sit down with Rob again, and a couple other folks, I'd sit down, I'm talking about that literally, but just Zoom with them. And get those additional costs, and we'll get in. It'll still be a minor project, but we'll grab some reimbursement there, won't be big, but it'll be, you know. It'll be something.
Okay.
Well, can you make sure to talk to all department heads, it's not just DPW?
Yes, Michael.
Okay, thanks, including the mayor's office, cause I haven't gotten anything about what to submit.
Yep, I will do that, Michael, uh, that's frankly something I need to. Uh, should have had, and I need to catch up on, but I will do that.
Okay, Shaheen, further down, please. I think we're sort of wrapping this up.
Yeah, we are.
Okay.
The, yeah, like, the COVID stuff, you can go up just a little bit there, Perk, thank you. Um. Like I, I, I said at the beginning, you know, and, and the question from Michael was, are there other things we should be applying to, to get reimbursements? Not so much about reimbursements, but it's other grant opportunities. Uh, and we're waiting for the. Second and third big stimulus bills, that's the one at the. Uh, end of December, I think the last one was called the American Recovery Act, or that came, was signed into law in uh, March. We've gone through those, but they, they still have to be, they're getting translated into specific programmatic. Initiatives, and that's, that's what we're waiting on. There's gonna be a huge, there's gonna be a lot of stuff there. And it's gonna deal with housing, additional housing stuff beyond what we've seen before, Rebecca. Transportation, infrastructure, small businesses assistance, that's the, the, the focus of it, so that's. A real big deal, where we have uh, some top-level analysis, I've read. we have, uh, some top level analysis. I've read, you know, good parts of, of both the two most recent acts. And, but we're just waiting for it to get, uh, figure out how it's getting programmed. And we'll be updating on a regular basis on that. I'd like to, in fact, Tom, if we could just update the council once a month on that as it emerges, because it's coming out now.
Absolutely.
Uh, to just get, I don't want to go off on a tangent here. Just give you an example. I, I own a house in Troy. I had tenants that didn't pay me for a year, but now there's this rental assistance program that will make me whole and get them off the hook for the money they owe me. There's, but it took a while. That was passed in, at the end of, uh, uh, December. And it's, it was first run by HCR, handed over to the state office for temporary disability assistance. They are still working on the actual application process and stuff like that. It'll probably be done in another month or two. So that's, that's what has to happen with a lot of this stuff. But we're going to follow closely.
Bill, uh, I believe Dominic has a question for you.
Yes, go ahead, Dominic.
Yes, thank you. Uh, actually, I just wanted to introduce myself and just, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but just to bend your ear, because I'll probably reach out if you can maybe look and see what's out there for some transportation style, uh, for some traffic calming, uh, devices and crosswalk markings and some, uh, you know, traffic signs, uh, you know, that we could, uh, look for, uh, improving.
We're looking, in particular, we're looking for signs that indicate how fast cars are going?
Yes, speed limit signs. Yeah.
Need three of them desperately.
Okay. Yeah, there's, there's, there's a way to do that through the Governor's Traffic Safety Council. Every year, and we've grabbed a lot of that money, but more than that, what's, um, we got to reach out to Region Eight at, at DOT, uh, about funding some of that. You folks are out, uh, outside, one of the challenges that Hudson always has is you're outside the ages of what's called the Metropolitan Planning Organization. In the capital region, there's the Capital District, uh, Transportation Planning Council. Uh, I actually sat on that for a few years and it was a lot of local representatives and DOT people and we doled out the money. Here, there's no such organization. So the appeal and the outreach has to be done directly to Region Eight, to DOT. Uh, but Dominic, to, to answer some of your stuff, um, you'll have, you have my email. If not, Tom can certainly get it to you. Um, send me a, a list of what you're thinking about, because that's going to be stuff that's going to be fundable. We see, uh, just through the feds, uh, DOT getting a ton of money. We're going to be able to do some stuff here now.
Okay, Bill.
I'll try to get it to you by the end of the week. Thank you.
And make sure you see me, Dominic, please. Um.
Well, send me its contact first, huh?
There you go. Okay. Uh, what's left here? Uh, these are just some specific.
A couple, a couple of ones. Yeah. Well, I'll just zip through these here quickly here.
Yeah, because we're kind of.
Yeah, I don't want to take up your time. Uh, floats, floats for docs. There is a Hudson Rivers Estuaries Program. We've been successful with that in the past. That's due June 2. Uh, there was a number of things that Michael, you had mentioned about Hudson River, uh, Hudson River Estuary Access and so forth. And you talked about the, the Brackish Meadow. I'm going to, uh, have to have an offline conversation with you, but I'm thinking either the Estuaries Program, the Water Quality Improvement Program, or the Green Infrastructure Grant Program might fit that. And then going down to River Education, that is a, uh, you know, signage, stuff like that, that's under the Estuaries Program. So if you continue down a little bit more, uh, local stewardship planning, Seventh Street Park, that'd be a tough reach right now. So. Uh, additional needs, here we go. Sidewalk improvements. And again, we expect DOT to get, to have a, have a lot more money than they did before. We've funded stuff before with wealthy, safe, safe, uh, it's actually Safe Routes to Schools. I, uh, misnamed that. And the transportation has for program. That's where we've done sidewalks before. Uh, ADA stuff that can come out of CDBG, the truck route, uh, I know it's a big deal. That's a, something for Region Eight, but that, that really includes, there's, uh, the big push on that, what would work is, uh, the environmental justice component, because that's really affecting, uh, some of the poorer areas in Hudson. So, and that's, that's, that truck route is, that's tough. So. And that's, uh, that's really all I have here.
Yeah. And Malachi, you see, you were on the agenda there. So thank you, Bill. Um, we will set up something where we meet with you more regularly. So that we can.
Yeah, let's, let's do that. Yep.
You know, um, outlining more specific grants to go for. And then they have to come before the council to, you know, get the full approval and we'll move along.
Yeah, that sounds good.
I mean, if you have, if you have a list of deadlines, that would help too on some of these.
We'll put those together. We'll put those together. Absolutely.
Okay. Well, thank you, Bill, and thank you, James.
Bill, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
James, uh, James sent me a, uh, a text earlier saying he looked like Mike Ehrmantraut from, uh, Breaking Bad.
Who does? Oh, you do. Yeah.
Anyway, thank you.
We got to move along because we have a lot of resolutions.
Okay, great. Thank you.
But thank you very much. Okay, Shaheen, let's get moving here. Here we go. Uh, if there's no further, uh, uh, questions about this, can I have a roll call vote, please, Tracy, if you're still with us?
Alderman Griga.
Hi.
Halloran.
Eileen?
Hi.
Oh, there she is.
Louis. Maranti.
Dominic? What happened to him? He seems to have disappeared. Dominic, are you there? He seems to be gone.
Rosenthal?
Hi.
Tremblay?
Hi.
Walker?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
President DPHO?
Hi.
Carrie.
Thank you. Um. The next resolution, please. Uh, if there's no further conversation, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Griga.
Hi.
Halloran.
Hi.
Louis. Maranti.
I texted him just now, but he does not seem to be here.
Rosenthal.
Hi.
Tremblay?
Hi.
Walker?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
President DPHO?
Hi.
Carrie.
Resolute, the next resolution, please, Shaheen? If there's any further con, is there any further conversation? In that case, can I have a roll call vote, please? Tracy?
Alderman Griga.
Tiffany?
Hi.
Oh, there you are. Thank you.
Halloran?
Hi.
Louis? Alderman Maranti? Rosenthal?
Hi.
Tremblay?
Hi.
Walker?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
President DPHO?
Hi.
Carrie.
Um, the next. This is the, uh, this has already been introduced and seconded. This is the, uh, grant to the Bindlestiff Circus. Is there any, whoa.
Whoa.
Is there any?
Dominic?
Hello? I don't know what that is, but is there any more discussion? In that case, a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Griga.
Hi.
Halloran?
Hi.
Louis? Maranti?
They're not back.
Rosenthal?
Hi.
Tremblay?
Hi.
Walker?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
President DPHO?
Hi.
Carrie.
Um, the next resolution, please, Shaheen. Jeff, uh, do we need an amendment? Um, one of these has to be changed slightly, uh, up, the second one to, uh, 12,500. Do we need to formally amend that or can we just do that?
Just make them, we'll just, um, introduce this one already, right?
Yes.
So let's do a motion first to amend the amount and then, um, then you can vote on it.
Okay. The, uh, the reason for the amendment, folks, is that the Tourism Board has found somebody to do, to take care of all of the planters and the plantings and the refurbishing. And, uh, they're doing it for no cost. I mean, no, um, uh, labor cost. But it's going to cost, uh, 12,500. That, I should say, it's going to be up to 12,000. They just want a larger margin for what they might spend. Um, and so even though I'm making an introduction to raise it to 12,500, it may not actually, they may not actually spend all that. So can I have an introduction?
Which line, which line are you amending, Tom?
The second one.
Okay.
To Columbia Development Court. Uh, can I have an introduction?
Calvin.
Thank you. A second.
I'll second.
Jane, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, the amendment, uh, succeeds. Can we now have a roll call vote for the resolution, please?
Okay, I just want to be clear for the minutes. Um, we are changing the second paragraph, whereas, which is the number two, is going up to $12,500 to the CDC. And then also where it lists the grantee down below will be $12,500.
Correct. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Griga.
Hi.
Halloran?
Hi.
Louis? Maranti? Rosenthal?
Hi.
Tremblay?
Hi.
Walker?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
President DPHO?
Hi.
Carrie.
Thank you. Next, uh, resolution, please, Shaheen? Uh, I don't think we need much more discussion of this. Can I have, this is to appoint Ivy Dane as a new member of the Tourism Board? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
All the resolutions for the Tourism Board?
Uh, no. But you were there last week, so many of them were. Um, the sixth, uh, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Griga.
Hi.
Halloran?
Hi.
Louis? Maranti? Rosenthal?
Hi.
Tremblay?
Hi.
Walker?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
President DPHO?
Hi.
Carrie.
The next resolution, please, Shaheen. Uh, as you know, we, we introduced and seconded a resolution recognizing CWA, Communication Workers of America, as the bargaining agent for certain employees of the Hudson Youth Department. Any further conversation? If not, a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Griga.
Hi.
Halloran?
Hi.
Louis?
Hi.
Maranti? Rosenthal?
Hi.
Tremblay?
Hi.
Walker?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
President DPHO?
Hi.
Carrie.
The next resolution, please, Shaheen. And Shaheen, is Dominic trying to get in? Is there anybody waiting to try to get in?
No, there's nobody in the waiting room.
Okay. Cause he said he's trying to get in. I don't know what that means. Um, next revolus, resolution, please. This is something we approved a while back. Uh, it's for the Hudson, um, one of the two grants that were given to the Hudson Business Coalition from the original Project Hudson. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Griga.
Hi.
Halloran?
Hi.
Louis?
Hi.
Rosenthal?
Hi.
Tremblay?
Hi.
Walker?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Mr. President DPHO.
You can call me Tom. Uh, hi.
Thank you. Carrie.
Uh, the next resol, uh, I almost said it again. The next resolution, please. Uh, this too is the other, uh, grant that was for the Hudson Business Coalition, which we discussed last week. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Griga.
Hi.
Halloran?
Hi.
Louis?
Hi.
Rosenthal?
Hi.
Tremblay?
Hi.
Walker?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
President DPHO?
Hi.
Carrie.
Thank you. Next resolution, please, uh, Shaheen. This is, um, uh, let's see, where are we here? Uh, this is, uh, the resolution updating our anti-discrimination, anti-harassment policy, uh, which we approved last week, I mean, which we, uh, introduced and seconded last week. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Griga.
Hi.
Halloran?
Hi.
Louis?
Hi.
Rosenthal?
Hi.
Tremblay?
Hi.
Walker?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
President DPHO?
Hi.
Carrie.
And the next resolution, please, Shaheen. This, as you know, just allows the Police Department to use HTC as a fiscal sponsor so that they can then, uh, build a, uh, Memorial Garden entrance to the police station. This is not asking us for any money related to this project, uh, as we determined last week. So can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Griga.
Um, I.
Halloran?
Hi.
Louis? Rosenthal?
Hi.
Tremblay?
Hi.
Walker?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
President DPHO?
Hi. And I do note that Dominic is not here. Correct, Dominic?
Yes. Can you hear me, Tom?
Yes, we can. Good. Glad to have you back.
Thank you.
Alderman Maranti, what is your vote on Resolution Number 11 related to the Memorial Garden?
Alden Maranti, what is your vote on Resolution Number 11 related to the Memorial Garden for the Police Department?
Oh, um, hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to the new resolutions. Let's see, yes. So this is just a simple resolution supporting a grant application that's being submitted by the Friends of Oakdale Lake, um, to fund an airator for Oakdale Lake. This is just a, uh, resolution in support. It does not involve any, um, anything else from us.
What's an airator?
I think that's how they keep the water, um, aerated, and that means to keep it both clean and full of, uh, what?
I'm, I'm.
But it is oxygen, Tom.
Yeah.
If you guys need me to talk on here.
It reduces what, Jeff?
Algae blooms.
It's a reduce, reduction of the algae blooms. There you go.
So this, does this minimize what the city does every year to clean, um, Oakdale for the summer program?
Tamara, you want to answer that?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Um, so for the last year, um, the city hasn't, Nick had transitioned to a, um, a non-chemical cleaning procedure that was just using enzymes. Last summer, he stopped using that. Um, he stopped using even the enzymes, and there wasn't a big change, which was great, but we're in year two of a DEC-funded, um, community impact grant, which is looking at the water quality, and they've established that there is nutrient loading of a kind that's not healthy for the lake. So there's too much potassium. Um, and there's, there's a second year of, um, of study happening, starting soon. But a preliminary recommendation was to use, like, aeration to essentially bring more oxygen into the ecosystem, um, which would keep the, essentially, if it keeps, if it goes on like this without any aeration, eventually the system will get, too hot, and fish can start dying, and invasive species can keep on growing. And when you see all that duckweed and stuff growing on the lake, especially in June and July, that's because of, um, a nutrient load. So aeration is a, is a very non-intrusive way of sort of short, disrupting that, that cycle of too much nutrients.
Thank you.
Thank you. So DPW will not be, um, cleaning out?
No.
No, it's just a solar panel, and then it, it oxygenates it.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, can, somebody has to, can I have an introduction? Somebody has. That echo is really annoying. Um, can I have an introduction, please?
Eileen.
Thank you, Eileen. A second?
Calvin, I'll second.
Thank you, Calvin. A roll call vote, please.
Alden McGregor.
Hi.
Halloran.
Hi.
Lewis. Lewis. Maranti.
Uh, um, thanks, Tamara, for, uh, educating, because we just said airate. I was thinking of a airate sign, uh, you know, back in the old days, but, aye.
Rosenthal.
Hi.
Tom Lee.
Hi.
Walker.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
President DPHO.
Hi.
Carrie.
Okay, the next resolution. Um, this resolution is awarding a grant to, for the Waterfront Wednesday Project. It's a hefty grant, but it's for, it's for the entire summer. Um, and, uh, let's get an introduction and a second first. Do I have an introduction?
Eileen.
Thank you, Eileen. Can I have a second?
I'll second, uh, Walker.
Thank you, Malachi. Discussion. Any questions?
So the Tourism Board, um, the funds are coming from them?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay.
This is from their fund. I mean, they, they're willing to make a presentation, but if everybody's happy with this, we can just approve it.
Works for me.
Okay, a roll call vote, please.
Alden McGregor.
Hi.
Halloran.
Hi.
Lewis.
Hi.
Maranti.
Hi.
Rosenthal.
Hi.
Tom Lee.
Hi.
Walker.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
President DPHO.
Hi.
Carrie.
Next resolution, please. Thank you all, by the way, from the Waterfront Group for coming. Uh, next resolution, please, Shaheem. Um, this is just actually a back, you know, we never actually apparently uh, approved the MOA where the police agreed to uh, defer their salary for this year. So this authorizes the mayor to sign that memorandum of understanding. Can I have an introduction, please? Did someone say something?
I'll introduce you.
Thank you, Calvin. A second, please?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Thank you, Malachi. Any questions? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alden McGregor.
Hi.
Halloran.
Hi.
Lewis.
Hi.
Maranti.
Hi.
Rosenthal.
Hi.
Tom Lee.
Hi.
Walker.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
President DPHO.
Hi.
Carrie.
Thank you. The next resolution, please, Shaheem. Uh, this is allowing the, accepting a donation on behalf of the Hudson Fire Department. They're receiving a check from Columbia County, and they're also Hudson River. Who's the other one?
Uh, Hudson River, the bank. There are different.
Yep. Okay, can I have an introduction, please?
Eileen.
A second, please.
Okay, I'll second.
Uh, roll call vote, please.
Alden McGregor.
Hi.
Halloran.
Hi.
Lewis.
Hi.
Maranti.
Hi.
Rosenthal.
Hi.
Tom Lee.
Hi.
Walker.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
President DPHO.
Hi.
Carrie.
Next resolution, please, Shaheem. Uh, these were just, uh, slight calculations. Uh, the city treasurer had to increase some of the worker comp funds because when she does it for the budget, it's based on an estimate, then the actuals come in, and this has to, uh, cover those actuals. Can I have an introduction in a second, please?
I'll introduce you.
Second, please. Someone?
Oh, yeah, I'll do it. Walker.
Thank you, Malachi. A roll call vote, please.
Alden McGregor.
Hi.
Halloran.
Hi.
Lewis.
Hi.
Maranti.
Hi.
Rosenthal.
Hi.
Tom Lee.
Hi.
Walker.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
President DPHO.
Hi.
Carrie.
The next resolution, please, Shaheem. Uh, this is a, another, uh, donation from the, uh, money raised from the plunge. This is the Friends of Hudson Youth giving half to the Hudson Fire Department for the City of Hudson Fire Department Water Rescue and Dive Team. Um, can I have an introduction, please?
Actually, Tom, this is Heather. Can I make a very small comment?
Sure.
So I was reached out by the Hudson Fire Department, and they would like the donations that are specific to the dive team to go into a separate line. I obviously have no issue with that, so, but that would moderate this, so, guess we would create a new line for miscellaneous fire donations dive team. So if, are both all willing to do that, um, I would agree that we should go forward.
Okay, do we need?
Is there confusion when they're spending, like, when, like, to have it in a separate line?
Well, I, I think the idea is that the money was specifically raised for the dive team, and putting it into the miscellaneous fire donations line kind of muddies the water. So what I'm suggesting is that my department will create a new line for identifying both the monies that came in. So as opposed to donations not budgeted, it will donations for fire dive team. And we also change the expenditure line, the expenditures for the fire dive team. So.
Are you going to do this with other donations that are specific for certain things with the fire department and others as well?
Correct. Absolutely. So, uh, I could, I could try. I mean, create those, but I think the easiest thing would be to just have a small adjustment to the resolution that basically says that it, that the city treasurer is, you know, offers and directed to receive those funds to a line, revenue line specific to dive team revenues and expenditure line that is specific to dive team expenditures. And that was requested of me by, uh.
Yeah, we got, President, so do we need an amendment, Jeff? Mm-hmm. Jeff?
And do we need to do this for every line?
Yeah. Tiffany, can you hold off a second? Jeff, do we need, what did you say?
You've already introduced this one, right?
Yeah.
Okay, no, we, no, we don't have an introduction.
You don't have an introduction yet? No, then we just make the change, um, in the lines of what Heather said, resolve the city treasurer is authorized and directed to receive those funds in a segregated, why don't we just say in a segregated line for the fire department, water rescue, and dive team.
Perfect, because we don't actually have the council on deck, because I just got this late, okay? But yeah.
Right, so it's just direct, it just directs you to put it in there, and, um.
Right, it segregates it, that's exactly correct.
See if you can make a note of that, and then you're free to introduce and vote on it, Tom.
Okay, thanks.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you. Can I have an introduction?
I was asking, is this, does, does the treasurer have to do this for every line that she creates for an approval? Or can it be said here and done so she can do this at the treasurer's office without having to do it? Come to the council for every line?
She can, she doesn't need council's approval to create a line. The problem here, Tiffany, was because the, um, resolution was drafted directing it to go into a specific line, and she needs the flexibility to put it into a new line. We just have to amend this resolution. It doesn't have to be done regularly.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear, being that she's going to do this, uh, for the future for all departments.
Well, that'll be up to her if she finds necessary to do that.
Each time she puts in a resolution. Um, so can I have an introduction in a second, please?
I'll introduce.
Second, please? Someone? Thank you, Malachi. A roll call vote, please.
Alden McGregor.
Hi.
Halloran.
Hi.
Lewis.
Hi.
Maranti.
Hi.
Rosenthal.
Hi.
Tom Lee.
Hi.
Walker.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
President DPHO.
Hi.
Carrie.
Thank you. The next resolution, please, Shaheem. Nope, back one. Oh, it seems to be missing. Hmm.
Tom, can I make one quick comment on?
I, I, you're breaking up. What's that?
I'm sorry, can I make one quick comment on Tiffany's comment? I just want to reassure her. The money was always going to the fire department. There are the monies, the donations, to be split out between general firefighting support and dive team. So all the money goes there. That's not a question, it's just adding an extra expense line. I just want to make sure Tiffany was clear on that.
Right, thank you. Um, the next.
Um, I can, I can put that up if you want.
Oh, there it is. No, here it is. Sorry, Shaheem, it's under.
Oh, yeah, it is.
The Fair Housing Officer. It's, it's out of order.
It's the bottom one.
There, you got it right there. Excellent, thank you. So this is, um, uh, allowing the mayor to sign an agreement with the paddle board, uh, Hudson Paddles. We did this last year. The contract's been vetted by Jeff and, and approved. Um, so if there's no further, well, I'm sorry, can I have an introduction, please?
Eileen.
Thank you, Eileen. A second.
Calvin, I'll second.
Is that Calvin?
Yeah, I'll second.
Thank you, Calvin. Uh, any conversation? We've done this before. We're doing it again. Okay, a roll call vote, please.
Alden McGregor.
Tiffany, you're muted.
Hi.
Halloran.
Hi.
Lewis.
Hi.
Maranti.
Hi.
Rosenthal.
Hi.
Tom Lee.
Hi.
Walker.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
President DPHO.
Hi.
Carrie.
And the last resolution. It's, there it is, yes. As you recall, last week, um, uh, this small section of Montgomery Street with dead ends, uh, uh, behind Ben Fain's property, he would like to, um, purchase it. This dissolves, this continues that tiny portion, 90 feet of the street. And this is not the sale yet. This just discontinues the street that, so that in the future, we can sell it. Um, can I have an introduction, please?
Eileen.
Thank you, Eileen. A second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you, Malachi. Any conversation?
Tom, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Just to point out to everyone that attached and part of this is a negative declaration under Seeker. You have the EAF and the Part Two, which I filled in, which just says, you know, this doesn't have any impacts on anything, because you're just discontinuing a short section of a road. But it's a step we have to go through, especially since we're selling the property. Um, so I just wanted to make that clear to everyone.
Thank you. Jeff? Okay, a roll call vote, please.
Alden McGregor.
Hi.
Halloran.
Hi.
Lewis.
Hi.
Maranti.
Hi.
Rosenthal.
Hi.
Tom Lee.
Hi.
Walker.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
President DPHO.
Hi.
Carrie.
Thank you, Tracy. So, um, next bit of business is, uh, the proposed local law. Amending our city code to create the position of a fair housing officer. We've discussed this extensively, I, I believe. Um, uh, there's, you know, it's, I, I, unless there's more question, well, let me, excuse me, let me get a, um, introduction in a second, please.
Will you contribute?
Calvin, in a second.
A second, huh?
Thank you, Malachi. Any further discussion? Okay, a roll call vote, please. Tracy?
Alderman, Alderman Griga.
Hey.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Lewis. Maranti.
Aye.
Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Chombley.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
Aye. Tracy?
Yes?
Oh, uh, I assume it passed?
It, it, it was approved by the county council, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, one, uh, one note before we go into, uh, a public conversation. Um, it was asked last week that Craig Hag, uh, make a presentation to the council this week. Unfortunately, Craig was on vacation for two weeks. He's backloaded in work. He will certainly be here in May and will catch us up on a number of things, including, uh, the vacancies and what, what the status is of all the vacancies. A reminder to those who keep, we're probably gonna have to relook at our vacancy law, um, in committee soon because frankly, it's very easy to satisfy the current law, even though we, we, uh, just put it into, uh, effect, uh, I believe now two years ago. Some of you may know that the moment you get a building permit, you are no longer considered a vacant building. So what you may see out there that looks vacant to you, um, and, and, and abandoned in one sense, uh, isn't by the, the current law. So the suggestion has been that we toughen up this law somewhat, and I hope to, uh, establish an ad hoc committee to look into that. While we're on the subject of ad hoc committees, I also, uh, intend not only to, to create one, um, as we mentioned earlier, to deal with, uh, grants, but also in the near future, uh, to look at taxes and assessments. These are both.
Oops, sorry. Are you sure you want to go there?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think it comes from the public as much as from the council. Um, it's not gonna be right away, uh, but.
Wait till next year, please.
Well, uh, but you know, we need to, we need to start thinking more about, um, uh, issues related to both and to be prepared for, um, what happens next in both, uh, you know, one of the things we're thinking about when we do consider the, what the IDA is going through with their consideration for the pilot, for the, uh, housing is to remember that, uh, the way, the way assessments and property taxes work that even though you give pilots here and there, sometimes they're balanced out by development. Um, I know that sounds, uh, perhaps glib, but I think it can be demonstrated with, um, data. And that's one of the things we need to do in the future. Um, so moving right along, I open, first council members, if you have anything you'd like to raise.
Well, Tom, I have wanted to do a, a small presentation, uh, at the end if, if possible.
Okay, um, what, um, what?
Um, same thing, just about, um, you know, to implement in industrial or outdoor fitness.
Yeah, I mean, uh, I mean, more than what we covered in the, uh,
Yeah, that, I think what we covered was just, um, you know, actually just solidifying that the money is, is gonna be there. But I just wanted to do sort of a presentation on, you know, just the equipment.
Okay, um, what would you, how long will this be?
Not long at all.
Okay.
Quick.
Shahim? In the future, uh, you know, presentations that council members want to make, I, I'd appreciate it, you know, getting a heads up. So that we can, you know, make it part of the agenda, but go ahead.
All right. Shahim, you have the, uh, photos? All right, um, I just, uh, just what a wonderful, uh, opportunity we have to implement, uh, industrial, um, outdoor fitness equipment for our young people, uh, all the way up to our seniors. And as you can see here, also, you know, uh, disabled uh, people as well, um, that can be utilized daily by our, our community members, you know, along with visitors who would just want to come and, uh, just enjoy the beautiful public parks while, while they're here temporarily. Um, I mean, this is the chance for the council, uh, along with the rest of the community to, to advocate for a healthier Hudson that is purely beneficial and essential, especially during these trying times with the COVID. Um, where being healthy can, can literally save your life. Uh, we have, have planted fitness, uh, requires you to be a certain age to join a gym. We have, you know, personal gyms and private gyms that's, that's really not affordable to everybody. But, uh, I feel that and, and believe everybody should just have access to means of a healthier lifestyle and, uh, and opportunity to, to just advance not only their physical health, but also enhance their, their mental health. And it has been proven time and time again that, that exercise and good health is a good, uh, distresser. And, and that's just very valuable to our livelihoods. Um, but I'm, I'm encouraging and welcoming anybody who, who wants to brainstorm with, with some ideas or even to help do, do some more detailed or strenuous studies. Uh, I'm more than happy to oblige because, uh, you know, I think we're all in this together and, uh, not only is it, is it a want, but I, I just feel it's an absolute need. So, uh, Shahim, were there any other pictures? Yeah, just, these just are, are some, some pictures of, uh, you know, various exercise equipment, industrial equipment that, you know, we could put together. Um, I actually went down uh, with, uh, Mr. Nick, him headed down and just to see the area, they were, it looked like there was, there was space for some of these, these things to be, uh, implemented in. And, um, I just think, you know, just, not just down by the waterfront, but just all over Hudson, we can put these, uh, you know, little um, of, equipment, uh, down there. And I think it's, it's, you know, be beneficial.
Okay, thank you. I, I think, uh, I think we can all agree on that, um, without a doubt. And the key is, of course, to, um, come up with a specific, uh, plan or proposal that our grant writer can then direct to the proper, um, funding source.
Absolutely.
I'm glad you're working on that, Malachi. I know Nick and, uh, Michael have both, uh, offered to help you with that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I have that video you had as well. I'm not sure if you guys.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Can you play that? It's, it's quick. It's really quick. I'm sorry. I know it's late, guys. Sorry. Lee, they had started to do a recreational, um, I think it's a basketball setting, basketball, maybe court um, down here. And, uh, I wanted to see if we can maybe finish the product. Uh, this is, this is the space, well, one of the, one of the spaces that, uh, I believe they were gonna use for, uh, the basketball, uh, maybe for the kids section. And then up here, where I'm gonna try to be quick and walk over this way. But they actually put down the blacktop, um, years ago. I'm, I'm really not even sure how many years ago they did it, but, uh,
Quite some time ago, I reckon.
It's, it's, it was set down, but it, it was not finished. So this is a unfinished, uh, production with, uh, looked like the, the basketball, uh, court, looked like a full basketball court would be able to be in this spot, be in this area. And so I am just, uh, you know, proposing that we finish up uh, down here on Mill Street because there are tons of kids that comes down here on a regular basis, uh, trying to play basketball, actually on a, a portable basketball rim that, uh, you know, is privately owned. But the kids are coming down and they're trying to make good use of, you know, their time. And so I believe if we was to finish up this area, this would be so beneficial um, to our kids in Hudson. All right.
Okay. Thank you, Malachi. Okay, move right along. Uh, we have some hands. Well, hold on, Dominic. I have a couple others before you. I'll get your, from, for the council, you're third in line, first Tiffany. Tiffany? Hmm. There you go. No? Okay, Rebecca.
Hey, I just.
I just wanted to know, I just saw the pictures in the wheelchair in the park. I just wanted to know, um, is there a plan to, um, get the people down there in, in that situation?
I'd say let's, let's come up with one. Let's figure out what we can do to, to implement that and, you know, figure out, you know, how we can incorporate that into the park. So I'm saying, I need everybody, everybody to, you know, volunteer. Let's, let's figure out some things. I'm trying to go full force with this thing.
Cool. I just wanted to, uh, say, I think it's a great initiative and great idea, and I'm really glad you're working on it. And if I can be of any help, I don't know anything about, uh, exercise equipment, but I'd be happy to help.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And now Dominic.
Thanks, Tom. I, I apologize. I just, um, backtrack real quick for clarification regarding the fair housing, uh, officers. So i- in the meanwhile, if, if we adopt this and you know, it doesn't get appointed or there's issues like, you know, the grant writer and everything that we have issues appointing a person, this doesn't hamper anyone utilizing the county in the meanwhile, if there's an issue, if that position isn't filled throughout, through, for the city, correct?
I don't see why it would.
And it would never, even once it got, um,
Yeah.
created, I don't think it would bar anyone from going to the county unless the county were to take the position that we're not gonna help you because the city has their own, but that would be the only.
And that, that's our ten percent. Uh, any other councilmen want to speak before I open up to the public? I don't see any hands. So Linda Musman, you're up.
Uh, thanks a lot. We just want to ask everybody on the council to remind people that we have a uh, vaccine pod opening up for Hudson residents on Saturday from nine till two, and we need to fill it with as many Hudson people as possible. So please, uh, this is for Hudson. We, they're gonna open it up to the public soon. So as soon as we can get more Hudson people in, it would help.
And this is at the fire station, correct?
At the fire station from nine to two. It is designed for Hudson, uh, residents. And it's a special little effort. Reach out to anybody and encourage anybody that hasn't gotten their vaccine, please go for it. It's a Moderna. And you will get both scheduled at the same, you know, when you call, you'll get both of them scheduled. Reach out to me or any of the supervisors or anybody. Uh, aldermen, whatever, but hurry because they're gonna fill up soon. Thanks. And I do support Malachi's effort on Mill Street. That's a project that was started, I believe, in two thousand and five. Waiting to be done.
Thank you, Linda. And to remind people, that's the combined firehouse on, um, uh, North Seventh and, uh, Washington Street.
Right. But you need to make, you need to call, reach out and get an appointment before. You can't just show up. Yeah.
Okay.
You gotta reach out to, you know, to aldermen or, uh, the supervisors and get it set up. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Calvin?
Uh, two questions. Uh, is there a flyer available for the, um, the vaccine clinic this Saturday? And, uh, two, um, is Moderna the only, uh, version of the vaccination that will be offered?
For this round, yes. For this particular round. The county's offering vaccines all the time, but this one is Moderna.
Is there, uh, thank you, Linda. And is there a flyer available? Or is this more so like on a, um, refer, like, uh, referral basis?
Uh, I'll send you something, but we've been asked people, uh, to reach out to the county, but I'll send it to you. Reach out to me, uh, directly and I'll get your name and phone number and get it to the county lickety split. So we have to hurry.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you.
Lickety split. I like that. Um, thank you, Linda. Uh, Stephanie Marcel would like to speak?
Thank you. Thanks, Tom. Thanks, everybody. I'll keep it brief just because I know it's real late. Um, thank you all for your service and as a community member, I don't know if I can, uh, volunteer to help out, but I support Malachi's idea also and would love to see this, um, be really accessible for folks with disabilities and elders and would help, would like to do some research to help that out. And the other thing is the, um, the Montgomery Street project. I just wonder what's, what kind of traffic control planning might have been on the books for the Cross Street, Second Street, Tanner's Lane, Montgomery Street Junction there. It's a mess and, um, I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, I did see your letter and this doesn't really affect the way that traffic flows currently. Um, I think for any future development in that area, they will have to deal with that. And I'm sure that any, um, proposal that comes up for the CAS building will also have to have, uh, will go before the planning board. And it'll become the purview of the planning board, planning board to solve that issue. Um, there, there is currently still, even with this, there will still be egress, even though it's technically on private property. There'll still be that egress that are, that people are using right now. Um, theoretically, I imagine that whatever happens with the CAS, they will have ways of coming out on to Front Street. So I hope that answers your question, but it's, it, there is no current city planning for it, um, because it's much more, I guess, related to what happens with the CAS property, which is not city property. I hope that kind of.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, anyone else? I'm giving you time because I've been criticized in the past for wrapping it up too quickly.
Not by me.
Anyone else with a question or comment?
Tom, it's, uh, Ryan Wallace, if I can, really quick.
I, I just want to. Down.
I, hi, everybody. I just want to build on what Linda, um, was saying about the vaccine pod. So I spend some free time actually assisting the county, uh, with public education down at the college during the course of the week. We are at a point right now where the demand is just starting to wane, not just here in Columbia County, but across New York State. So again, I would urge, um, and reinforce what Linda was saying. If anybody knows those that are in Hudson in particular that need to, um, get doses one done, um, reach out to the health department, again, directly as well. I think the more volume that they hear from the community to be able to do more pods here is going to help us and not just with our own vaccine supply in the county, but, um, I've seen, um, notices going back and forth between some of the private pharmacies between Columbia and Green Counties. There is an opportunity for us, if the demand is there, to actually tap into additional resource. So for everything, you know, that we're looking to do as a community to get more back to normal, getting as many people vaccinated is sort of our first priority. So, um, again, if you can put that information out there, Linda, I'm happy to contact you separately because I can get you some more of. Um, again, if you can put that information out there, Linda, I'm happy to contact you separately because I can get you some more of the, uh, signup information and flyers if it's needed.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Anyone else? Oh, let me remind, uh. Councilmen, I mean, older people, if you, uh. Introduced or seconded, uh, anything tonight, you must go in and stop in City Hall, please, sooner the better. And sign what needs to be signed. A moment of silence.
Will do.
Okay, an introduction. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
A second.
A second. Welcome.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed on the council? Uh, I guess that carries, um, and that's it. And I thank you all for attending and, uh.
One, you are now.
Yeah, who said that? Rebecca? Thank you, Rebecca. Thank you all. Good night.